Are we ready? Let's call to order. Welcome to the January 2021 Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Gulf Shores, Alabama. Let us begin with the Secretary calling the roll. He's here.
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 Jennifer Guthrie.
Here.
Matt Young.
Here.
Pete Tackeck.
Here.
Salad Young.
Here.
Bill E. Banks.
Dean Hall.
Here.
As is typical at our initial openings, we have the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting on December 15th. If there aren't any additions or corrections, someone offer a motion for acceptance.
I salute Mr. Chairman to accept the minutes from the December 15th meeting. That's right.
Second.
There's a motion and many seconds. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Dean? We have, let's see, one, two, three public hearings. We can get started. The first being Osprey Landing Subdivision Final Platt Request. Mr. Bauer, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Yes, sir, this first item is ZA 21-00002, Osprey Landing Subdivision Phase Two Final Platt. The applicant seeks final plat approval for a 25 lot subdivision. The property is located on the south side of Coastal Gateway Boulevard, directly south of Osprey Landing Phase One. So on your screen, you'll see the location maps for this property. Again, it's on the south side of Coastal Gateway Boulevard, which is the northern kind of boundary of the city of Gulf Shores. And the map on the right shows the property as it's situated, south of Osprey Landing Phase One, and it's directly to the west of Crimson Ridge Subdivision. To the south of the property is zoned agricultural. It's property owned by the, I think it's vacant wooded property currently. And then north of the proposed subdivision, across Coastal Gateway Boulevard is single-family subdivisions, to the west are single-family houses and vacant land. A little history on this application. Back April 24th of 2018, the Planning Commission granted preliminary subdivision plat approval for Osprey Landing Phase Two. No construction began, and so, and as you know, preliminary plat approval is only good for two years. So in January of 2020, the applicant approached the Planning Commission for a, seeking a preliminary plat extension. A two-year preliminary plat extension was granted by the Planning Commission. So they came back in April of 2020. Due to the changes of the R15 zoning district, as you recall, the lot size and lot width of the R15 increased. So at that point in time, they submitted another preliminary plat that was consistent with the new R15 zoning regulations preliminary plat, and that was approved by the Planning Commission on April 28th of 2020 with four conditions. So on your screen here is the proposed subdivision plat that is proposed for final subdivision approval. The property is 9.19 acres. Again, it's going to be used for 25 single-family lots. Lot sizes range from a little over 8,000 square feet to 8,700 square feet. Density equates to 2.7 units per acre. Setbacks for 35 feet in the front, 30 in the rear, and 10 on the side. The 35 feet in the front complies with the new R15 zoning regulations. Lot width is 60 feet. Open space, I did have a typo in your report. They've got 3.35 acres of open space, which equates to 36% of the development. In your report, it says 24%. The 24% is, they do have some wetlands on the property, which I think that equates to 24% of the property. Those wetlands, while we're talking about the wetlands, are in the, I'll say, on the left-hand corner of your screen, and those wetlands have been buffered by the required 30-foot wetland buffer. The subdivision complies with all of the new R15 zoning district area and dimensional requirements, and the final plat is consistent with the design and layout of the preliminary plat. It's worth noting, at preliminary plat approval, there were two waivers granted by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission granted a waiver to the 50-foot wide right-of-way requirement to reduce that right-of-way to 46 feet. And they also granted a waiver to the six-foot sidewalk width requirement to reduce that to five feet. Both of those waivers were granted to allow Phase Two to be a similar design as Phase One of Osprey Landing. And also, the 46-foot right-of-way width was primarily so that the lot sizes and lot widths and setbacks could comply with the new R15 zoning regulations. Article five of the subdivision regulations allows an applicant to provide a performance, a guaranteed performance, or performance assurance guaranteeing completion of the subdivision. This subdivision is currently still under construction. The grading for the roadways is pretty much there in that state, so they have not, last time I expected it, at least they had not put any asphalt down sidewalks or any of the other improvements. The drainage structures were, drainage ponds were graded, so it's under, it's currently still under construction. The applicant has provided a letter of credit in the amount of $372,513, which is 150% the estimated cost of improvements to complete construction. The improvements that have not been completed are asphalt paving, traffic control markings, concrete sidewalks, drainage structures, and all of the landscaping. The City Engineering Department approved the letter of credit and the associated cost estimate, so that's where we are today, is they seek final plat approval based on that letter of credit. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of Osprey Landing Phase Two Final Plat with the following conditions. Number one, an engineering plan shall be submitted to the Planning Commission upon request of release of the financial guarantee of performance by the applicant. Number two, prior to release of the financial guarantee of performance, the design engineer and/or his designees shall perform inspections in accordance with Section 5-2C inspection requirements of the subdivision regulations. Condition number three, inspections and test reports from each affected utility to ensure performance with all applicable regulations shall be submitted prior to the release of the performance surety. Number four, the extension of Somerset Drive proposed in Phase Four shall loop around and connect to the cul-de-sac proposed in Phase 3A of Osprey Landing. That is a carryover from a condition of preliminary plat approval. We included it as, in the final plat, so we wouldn't forget when, as this subdivision proceeds. Number five, a five-foot pedestrian easement shall be provided for the one-foot sidewalk located on private property due to the reduced width of the right-of-way to 46 feet. One foot of the sidewalk, I believe, on the, cameras on the south and north side, but it was on private property, so we'll need to have an easement recorded documenting that sidewalk encroachment. And then number six, subdivision plat shall reference the recordation number of the Osprey Landing covenants and restrictions. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Anyone up here have a question for Mr. Bauer?
I've got one, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Andy, so the cul-de-sac in Phase 3A, how much further south is it from that point? I'm inquiring, because should the cul-de-sac go in now, or is it going to continue further south? Is that the intent?
If we could go back to, I can't remember the exact length, but currently, there's no roadway, so if, for example, it's my understanding that Phase 3A will proceed directly after Phase Two.
Okay.
So they won't need a cul-de-sac. If, if, if it does not, the subdivision regulations require a temporary cul-de-sac to be installed in accordance with the Fire Department regulations, and Planning Department staff and the fire marshal will make sure that occurs.
Okay, thank you.
George, you okay with this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, anyone up here have anything? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address this issue? Yes, sir, come forward, let us know who you are.
Good evening, Ursula Godwin, Sawgrass Consulting, here on behalf of the developer. Just wanted to say that we are fine with all the conditions of approval. Little update on construction, actually went by on my way here. Asphalt is down. The whole site's been seeded and mulled. Landscaping will be going in here in the next couple of days, and lids on the storm drain inlets will be going in here in the next couple of days. So we're a little further along than Andy's last inspection, but just wanted to update you on where we are in progress. But no problems with the conditions, no problem with the cul-de-sac that we've mentioned in Phase 3A. The purpose, the intent of the entire subdivision is to make a large loop, and it's going to come back around and kind of tie back into the north end of Phase One when it's totally done, so have no problem complying with whatever we need to do in future phases.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for bothering to come and let us know. Is there anyone else? Now close the hearing. Any other camera question, gentlemen and lady?
Make a motion that we approve the application ZA 21-00002.
Second.
With a motion and a second. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed? We're unanimous now. See, there's a lot. What more do we got here? Mr. Bauer, still you?
Yes, sir, the next item on the agenda is ZTA 20-04, Article 17, Board of Zoning Adjustments, a zoning text amendment. At the recommendation of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, City staff proposes to modify Article 17-5E, Effective Variances, to allow an applicant one year to act on an approved variance. Little background on this item, probably, I think it was about a year ago, we brought some modifications, some bylaw modifications to the zoning board, or Board of Zoning Adjustment. Previously, their bylaws indicated that an applicant had six months to act on a variance. That was typically, that was a problem in the past, so we recommended to the board that they allow one year for an applicant to act on the variance. It seemed like it gave an applicant a little bit more time that was, made sense. So they, they agreed with that change, adopted it into their bylaws, as well as some other housecleaning items, but, so at that point, we started looking at our zoning ordinance, and noticed our zoning ordinance does not have, currently does not have any time limitation on the time to act on a variance. So we thought we needed to marry the zoning ordinance with the bylaws, so we didn't have a conflict, because we had that in the past, and it didn't work out too well. So what we propose to do is amend Article 17-5 Variance, Variances E, Effective Variances, to have a one-year time limitation for an applicant to act on a variance. And that is unless the board could always extend that time if they wanted to in their motion, but if no, if no changes are made, they'll have one year to act on a variance. So that is what's proposed before you today, and staff recommends approval of that zoning text amendment. Be happy to answer any questions.
You think that time limit, pardon me, time limit needs to be tied into something such as pulling the building permit or something like that?
It is. If we can go back to the screen, so I'll just read, I'll read it for you real quick. So, "Variances unless specifically conditioned by the BZA shall run with the land. A variance granted by the board shall lapse and be of no effect if after the expiration of one year from the date of such action by the board, no construction pursuant to such variance has taken place. The board may, for good cause shown, place specific conditions on the expiration and required action by the applicant in conjunction with its approval to grant the variance. In such cases where conditions established by the BZA have not been met, the variance shall become null and void, and the application shall be reheard with any new information or findings as appropriate prior to approval." And just, so I think that answers your question, is they've got to act, or construction has to be started in accordance with that variance. And another thing that has happened over time is there were some instances where people received variances, and then our zoning changed, and so this type of placing limitation on the variance will also hopefully address those issues where the variance is at odds with the new zoning requirements. So that's another good, good thing that this proposal will do.
Okay.
Andy, an applicant wanted, was up against the year and wanted an extension, that would be reheard from the Board of Zoning Adjustments, right?
Yes.
Right.
That's the body that would grant it.
I mean, normally, a variance is very specific to a setback or something like that, and it's really is for pending construction, so typically, I would think most variances, people are ready to build a house or build a building, and they get the variance and go ahead and get approval. But we have had instances where that doesn't happen, and then they're just lingering out there for a couple of years, and again, changes occur, and it's just not good to have some of those situations.
If you can prevent them.
That's right.
Anybody else have a question for staff? Pete?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on this issue? It is a public hearing. Evidently not. Thank you. This one's pretty clear and dry. Somebody offer a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment application, ZTA 20-03.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed? Well, it's unanimous. Andy, we get to still pick on you?
Yes, sir.
Somebody have a request subdivision regulation amendment?
Yes, sir, this is an amendment to the subdivision regulations. It's a housekeeping amendment. The City of Gulf Shores seeks to amend the subdivision regulations to replace all references to Director of Public Works and Public Works Director with City Engineer. So approximately, or within the last year, the Public Works Department was divided into two separate departments. Created a new City Engineering Department, who's headed by Mark Ackerman, and then the Public Works Department is now headed by Noel Hand. City Engineering Department reviews, does a lot of plan reviews, works on city street, street, like planning for new streets, things of that nature, also reviews subdivision site plans and things, things like that. Public Works Department now primarily is more maintenance-type stuff, picking up trash, you know, and debris, correcting probably drainage issues in subdivisions and things like that. So what this housekeeping amendment does is it reflects that change. So what we've done is pretty much replace all references to Public Works Director and Director of Public Works with City Engineer. So specifics of the proposal, in Article Three, will delete the definition of Public Works Director, and then Appendix Eight, typically, a final plat, there's an area for the Public Works Director to sign the plat, we'll change that to a certificate for the City Engineer. And then the last part of this amendment is to replace all references of Public Works Director and Director of Public Works with City Engineer. And we reviewed the subdivision regulations, there are 41 times, Director of Public Works or Public Works Director are used. We looked at every specific reference to make sure that that reference could be replaced with City Engineer, and wasn't something that's kind of leftover that the Public Works Department still handles. None of the references are leftover things that the Public Works Department handles, so we can replace all of those with City Engineer. We also looked at the Code of Alabama subdivision regulations section to make sure this complied with the Code of Alabama, and actually, the Code of Alabama uses City Engineer instead of Public Works Director, so this brings it in line with the Code of Alabama. So with that, we recommend approval of this subdivision text amendment.
And I understand that Mark was very pleased to have that title changed before we did away with the title that he had, not the other way around.
Yes, we're very happy. I guess it's been a little over a year. We, Noel and I have been, we'd always kind of tag teamed the responsibilities of the department, and Noel had always historically handled the operational side, I handled the engineering and planning review, so this was just a natural extension of that to actually separate the department, elevate his status, and make him a department head, because he earned it, and is doing a fantastic job. And then I keep going and handling the engineering and transportation needs of the city, as I've always done.
Well, since it comes down to that, you do a fantastic job as well.
I appreciate that.
One more quick comment. Because this is a subdivision regulation amendment, the, your action is final action, it does not have to be approved by the City Council.
Thank you. Anybody up here have a question? Comment?
I make a motion, Chairman.
Let's let someone, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this issue before we close the public hearings for the month of January 2021? I'll order an upward, Pete, do it to it.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we approve SBR 20-01, replace Public Works Director with City Engineer. Very well needed, and I'm all in favor of this, sir. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed? Not unanimous. So much for the public hearings. With one site plan to consider this afternoon, Dale Carter Building North Site Plan Review. Jennifer, we get to say hello, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing well. Happy New Year, you all. So I'm glad to be with you this afternoon. We have a site plan application, ZA 2004. This is the Dale Carter Building North. The applicant is requesting to construct a 4,297-square-foot building that was damaged during Hurricane Sally, and the location of the proposed structure is 3877 Gulf Shores Parkway. The location maps, the big red star indicates the parcel is located along the 59 corridor, commercial corridor, and then the aerial photograph will show you the subject building, seeing as this particular parcel has three existing buildings. All right, our parcel is 2.71 acres in size and contains three buildings. The, the buildings are your ace's better bodies, Jean's floor covering, and the subject building, which contained a blinds and shutter contractor. In 2017, site plan approval was given by this body for the Jean's floor covering building, which brought the current site up to code, and that included drainage, parking, and landscaping. Then we have a hurricane in September of 2020, which caused significant damage to the northern building, which now the applicant is required to reconstruct. The applicant is expanding the office space, as you can see, the remnants of that northern building there on your screen, so he will be expanding the office space there in the front, and then reconstructing the warehouse in the rear. All right, this is your proposed site plan. Again, the lot is 2.71 acres, and the site plan is for the change to the north building only. The existing elements are to remain the same within the, within the site, that's your drainage, parking, landscaping, lighting, and your trash service. The proposed new structure will be code compliant. As you can see on the screen, the previous structure, you can see the slab portion of the previous structure encroached over the property line, which caused the previous structure to be non-conforming. It was also non-conforming with current architectural standards as far as facade, and then the air conditioning unit also encroached over the property line. The current proposed replacement building complies with the area and dimensional requirements of the arterial business zoning district, and the applicant is proposing to remove the concrete slab and relocate the air conditioning unit out of the, out of the right-of-way, which is Landward Drive. Okay, so this is, so pictures that were included in your report of the previous structure. As you can see, the, the facade was all metal, on the warehouse portion on the rear, and then it also shows where that structure was encroaching into the, into the right-of-way for Landward Drive over the property line, as it was a rectangle, and then the previous, the proposed structure, I'll go back one, it stair steps so that it does not encroach over the property line. Now we have our proposed architecture. The applicant is keeping the remaining wood frame structure that is the front elevation. There is no metal proposed for that front elevation. The side elevations propose a combination of hardy board and metal siding. The south elevation, which will face the middle building, which is your Jean's flooring, Jean's flooring, contains 70% metal facade. The north elevation proposes a 40% metal facade, and that is the side that faces Landward Drive, and those meet the minimums for the non-metal facade. The rear elevation, the applicant is requesting an all-metal facade along the rear elevation. Now, this was a request that was granted in the 2017 site plan approval for the Jean's flooring building, and the staff supports this request from the applicant. The fire marshal has provided a phased approval, and our engineering department had no review comments or conditions. The proposed site plan complies with the future land use designation of commercial and mixed use, and the applicant has indicated that the blinds and shutter contractor will reoccupy the structure upon completion of the reconstruction. The use home and commercial improvement services is The use home and commercial improvement services is allowed by rights, so it complies to the BA Business Arterial Zoning District. The plan review, the proposed structure will conform to the current zoning ordinance regulations regarding the BA area and dimensional requirements, yard regulations, which that regulates the location of your mechanical units, air conditioning units, and architectural standards with the exception of the rear building facade. The proposed architectural treatments are comparable in material and appearance to the newest building, which is the Jean's flooring, and the existing elements of the site are to remain as approved in the 2017 site plan application. The staff is in support of the applicant's request for the all-metal facade along the rear elevation. Staff recommends approval of the site plan with three conditions. The planning commission to approve the request for the all-metal facade along the rear of the building. During the course of land disturbance or construction on the site, I'm sorry, on the subject parcel, any damages made to existing parking spaces, drainage areas, landscaping, et cetera, will be required to be replaced or repaired. And then finally, the applicant will move the air conditioning equipment so that it does not encroach into the Landward Drive right-of-way, as well as the existing portions of the slab within the right-of-way. If you have any questions, be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody up here have a question? No big plans to do anything great about Landward Drive?
I think that's a great question for Mark.
Not at this time. Well, certainly, I would say the south side, the Landward Drive actually loops in and loops back out, there is some future connectivity of plans for Landward Drive South, a path through the aperture and all of these other parts.
So we don't get on this, this. Any other camera questions for staff? Someone can offer one.
I'll make a motion to approve the Dale Carter North Building Site Plan Application ZA 21000004 with staff conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. As you just heard, all in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Is there anyone opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the audience who didn't have an opportunity to get on our agenda and would like to address the board this afternoon? Mr. Griffin? You have an ID, Wicked? Do we know you're a resident?
I do. I do. I don't always do this like I should, but I wanted to just check in and a sincere thanks for you guys' dedication and commitment in what we do. I know not every application is fun to deal with, but it's just critically important what we do, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, now we've got, well, is there, we're up. Let me go through what I'm doing here first. Did you want to check that topic that we spoke about yesterday afternoon?